Good evening. We're going to go ahead and get started. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Committee of the Whole to order, our July 17th meeting, and we'll call on the clerk to call roll.
Councilmember Smith, Councilmember Stallins, Councilmember Marsh.
Here.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Here.
Councilmember Craig, Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember Sumner, Councilmember Meek.
Here.
Councilmember Bogard.
Present.
Councilmember Velez.
Here.
Councilmember Bill.
Here.
Councilmember Giroud.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right. If you're able, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to its red flag, which is standing one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item number four, approval of the minutes of our June 19th, 2025 regular meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion with that? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? That passes. Number five, administrative matters. Item A, Hopkinsville Housing Study. Mr. Patrick Bowen is here to present. I didn't know if you were waiting, like doing a quick intro or anything?
Councilmembers, first of all, thank you guys for tuning in. Patrick has a national housing study expert, and he has done the state of Kentucky's recent housing study. He did one for Morehead and Rowland County, Mullenberg County, Owensboro, Bowling Green. So we called him here actually last year to work with us because all of you know, everywhere you go, we talk about housing. And that's really all we do is talk about housing, but we don't have a plan. And what this is was to give us some data points, and this is a first step for this council and the mayor's office to begin putting a framework together for a plan. It's a critical issue. It touches everything we do here from crime to cleaning up to economic development. And he's found, did a lot of detailed work, working, we particularly asked him to talk with Fort Campbell, talk with industrial parks, talk with nonprofit groups and various people to get their input, to give us a real study, to give us a good basis to begin wherever we're going to go. And he came highly recommended by various communities around Kentucky. And we've been a pleasure working with him and working with, he has worked with, he worked with CDS, Code Enforcement, Public Works. He worked with various people to give us a really solid report that is germane and specific to Hopkinsville. So he just rode in town today from outside of Columbus, and we're happy to have him.
Thank you. All right, let's, all right, thank you for having me here again. Patrick Bowen, President of Bowen National Research. So we were given a specific scope of work. I'll cover that in a second, but the focus of the study was Hopkinsville. But I didn't want to look at the city itself. We wanted to understand what was happening in the rest of the county. So you'll see data here tonight on Hopkinsville relative to the balance of the county, the secondary study area. You may see some references to the state of Kentucky as well. This is the scope of works. We looked at a lot of different demographics, economic information. Obviously, it's a housing study, so we looked at your rental housing stock, your for sale housing inventory. We looked at what's in the development pipeline, things like that. And so we have a good, robust analysis of housing, some of it which you'll, you'll probably say, we knew that, we know those things. But I think what the value of the study is, is to let you see what we found as an outsider, and what truly is happening to the rental market, the for sale housing market, some of the trends. So again, you'll know some of this stuff, or at least you suspect some of it. We are putting numbers to it here this evening in this presentation. And then we got some good community inputs. Some of you may have participated, whether it was stakeholders, so community leaders like yourselves. And we got some good survey results from employers. So we'll tell you what they told us, which I think you'll find fascinating. Then we have housing gap estimates, basically telling you, here's the need, whether it's rentals or for sale and different affordability levels. And we have some broad recommendations to at least as a starting point to think about as you all move forward with your housing. All right. So I have a lot of demographics in the study, a lot of good population information. The only thing I'm going to share with you tonight are probably the three, three or four core household data sets. Because in my world, I'm focusing on households. Population matters, and we do, again, cut it up many different ways. But what I want to show you is some of the key household trends, because households drive housing needs, right? It's how many people are living in the market, but it's what housing units you have. So I put up here real quick just Hopkinsville's total household numbers from 2010. And the graph looks worse than it really is because of the scale, the scale we used. You've lost maybe 100 households, a little over 100 households since 2010, and you state you're stabilizing now, and you're expected to grow a little bit through 2029. So not a real big change, but there's other things. I'll show you changes within households. Just because you're not growing a lot, you are changing with the composition of such households. All right. So this is households by age. This is change in those households 2024 to 2029. And you can see the different age groups, younger households on top, the older households on the bottom. Where are you expected to change? It's in that 35 to 44 age group, and then the 65 and older. And keep in mind, this isn't, you know, all these seniors aged 75 and older, for example, 293 new households over the next five years coming to Hopkinsville. That's a lot of them are just aging in place. So we're just having changes over time within these different age groups. So some of them are aging in place, some are people that are coming here to the area. So, but you can see with these changes by households, by age groups, it's going to affect what type of housing you all are going to want to think about as you move forward. Another one that we did, this is households by tenure, meaning renters versus owners. So the renters are in the dark blue, the owners are in the royal blue, changed from 2024 to 2029. And so you can see quite the biggest, the noticeable growth, which we factor in as we start to think about future of housing, is for the renters making over $60,000 a year and homeowners making over $50,000 a year, with the biggest change expected among those that make over $100,000 a year. So these are not unusual trends. It might feel like a surprise to you that we're going to have so much growth in higher income households, but we're seeing that in markets all over the country, and so Hopkinsville is no different. So these changes are going to affect what type of housing you're going to want to think about as you move forward. One of the cautions that I put out to folks, though, is you see the decline in the lower income households, renters and owners. And so some folks might conclude, we don't need any affordable workforce type housing, affordable senior housing. I'll show you what, what your housing stock looks like and the demand for that type of housing, how many people are waiting for affordable housing. Again, I just want to caution folks because they might see these numbers and go, okay, we don't need anything except some really high-end priced units. You do need that type of product, but you do need affordable or attainable workforce housing. I thought this, again, I picked some of the key things that I thought were most pertinent, and to me, this is probably one of the bigger things to be aware of, but you probably aren't. So you know that a lot of people commute into this area for work every day. You have over 14,000 people on a daily basis that commute in here. That makes up two-thirds of the people that work here. That might be surprising to some people. And why that's relevant is because these are folks that come in and earn wages in your city, and short of them spending, you know, lunch, you know, here, buying lunch or getting gas or something, running some basic errands, they're taking most of those earnings outside, back outside the city to wherever they live. Now, one of the contributing factors is a lot of these folks, a lot of these folks not moving in here, you don't have a lot, I'll show you in just a minute, you don't have a lot of housing that's available. So even if a lot of these folks wanted to live here, they really can't. And one of the things we didn't do here, but I can bring to the table, or at least to the discussion, is that we didn't survey people that are commuting into this area, but we've probably surveyed over 10,000 people in the last couple of years in markets all over Kentucky and other parts of the country. And we know for a fact that about 30 to 40% of people that commute into a community, if they were given an opportunity to live in the same community they work, they would move there. So you do have an opportunity to grow much more than what you have been growing, some decline here lately, and what's projected to grow. You have potential to grow much, much more. It's just a matter of housing's part of that challenge. There's other reasons why people wouldn't choose to live in Hopkinsville or any community, but certainly the limitation of what you have in terms of housing is holding you back, I think, from the growth that you really could see if you wanted that. Next slide. All right. This is another good one. I think we started to add this about just a few years ago, post COVID. So what you see here is, these are the top 35, I had to do this in two slides, so you see the half, in this first half of the slide, or this particular slide. These are the top occupations, so the most people that are employed within certain job sectors or occupation types for the Clarksville, Tennessee, Kentucky metropolitan area, which is essentially Hopkinsville's part of that. So these, I'll just use retail salesperson as an example at the very top. So we looked at the annual wages, whether it's at the lower quartile, I mean, the bottom fourth of those wage earners, or median midpoint, and then what can that worker, retail salesperson, afford to rent or to buy? So you can see for rentals, again, depending on which income we're looking at, a rent of 576 to 722. But if they wanted to buy a home, they should be, be able to reasonably afford a home at 76,000 to 96,000. Anything you see in red, let's just take the rents, for example, if you look at the top left, I have in that bright kind of yellow box there, fair market rent, it's 1246. That means that's the government's number for what a typical two-bedroom would be in this area, 1246. And we found rental information that would match up close to that. But you can see, most of those workers can't afford that rent. And you can see at the top right, the median list price, 229, and that's our data from what we found, what's available here. And again, you can see on the right-hand side of the table, all that red is basically saying, those workers can't afford to buy. Now, one caveat to this whole thing is this one wage earner, all right? So many households will have two or more wage earners. What this tells you is, you better have a second wage earner, you better have a second income or some source to be able to afford. So this is a big part of your workforce. Again, the next slide has the same type of information, just more jobs, little bit black in here in terms of what people can afford to rent or buy, but the theme is, is very similar. This is the bulk of your workforce that is, that has wages that are short of what they need to reasonably afford to rent or buy in this area. And I know in some communities, there may be resistance to affordable, attainable workforce housing. I will tell you this, if you don't care about housing, and that you care about the workforce, this is holding back your community. I'm going to tell you what employers are saying here in a second. This is impacting your employers because they're having a tough time because housing is not affordable to a bulk of the workforce. Next slide, please. So if you have a shortage of housing, which you do, and I'll show you that in a second, it does create some housing challenges. So one of the things that you all have in is no different than other communities. You have over 300 households in the, in the city that live in what's called substandard housing. So it's either units, believe it or not, you have it, and it's everywhere around the country. You have units that don't have complete plumbing facilities or kitchen facilities, or they're overcrowded. There's something being reported by that household to say, I live in substandard housing. It's a federal definition. So numbers not big, 300, over 300, but there's 300 households living in housing they probably shouldn't be in, living in, low modern-day living standards. But maybe more importantly is the cost burdened households. Those are people that pay over a third of their income towards their housing costs. Again, a federal definition. You have 2,700 rental units, 1,500 homeowners living in cost burdened housing. I think there's a, in fact, another number I have, I didn't put it in here. There's a, what's called severe cost burdened households. Those are people that pay over half, half of their income towards their housing costs. You have 1,400 households living here in Hopkinsville that pay over half of their income towards their housing costs. And so again, if you think about, what does that mean for the local economy? The more anybody spends towards housing, the less they got to spend at your retailers, your restaurants, and things like that. So this does, does impact your economy and the health of the community. And so again, affordability is a key housing issue that we found here, but again, no different than most markets we find around the country. All right. So one of the things we collected that you don't have, but again, you may just hear from people, and this is the rental housing supply. So overall, again, we looked at the city, which we have 31 multifamily apartments, is where my staff calls them, talks to property managers, gets incredible amount of detail, and then another 11 properties in the rest of the county. I put the red box on there for the occupancy level, because that's really what I just wanted you to focus in on. And so first off, at the bottom right-hand side of that, for Hopkinsville, you have a 97.6% occupancy rate. Is that good? Is that bad? That's high. And you typically, you want that to be about 94 to 96%. You want vacancies. Investors do not, property owners do not. They, they want everything full. I understand that. But for a healthy market, and that's what we're talking about in a housing needs assessment, you want about 94 to 96% occupancy because you want vacancy units or vacant units as people move into the community, which they can't because you don't have very much available. Family lives change. You want that millennial out of your basement, like move out of my, you know, move out of this house. And so where would they move? They have very little to choose from. Again, people get married, their incomes climb, their incomes drop. You want a variety of housing to be available. You have well below, or your occupancy rates well above what's considered healthy. And maybe more importantly, if you look, we have it broken out by different types, market rate versus tax credit or government subsidized. So anything that you see that says tax credit or government subsidized, that's households that make up about $64,000 for this area, if I'm not mistaken. In fact, yeah, I put it up there in the slide. So $64,000, so it's affordable housing, attainable. It's not just the workforce, it could be your seniors. If you look up in that table, all those tax credit and government subsidized housing units, 100% occupied. And the same thing for the rest of the county. So it's not just Hopkinsville, it's happening throughout the county. And I will tell you this, folks, that, that graph at the bottom right, you have about 1,900 households on waitlist for these units. You have more people on the waitlist for this type of housing, tax credit or government subsidized, than you have units. I don't think I've ever seen that before. So again, as, as you look at the demographics I showed you earlier, where you had the decline, projected decline in lower income households, you have almost 2,000 households. These aren't people, it's households. This means housing units could be filled if you had that housing stock. And then again, if you think back to the wages that I showed you of the workforce, many of them are people that would qualify for it. So bulk of your workforce would, would qualify for tax credit or government subsidized housing. So incredible pent-up demand for affordable housing. And so some of these numbers that I show you here this evening may be discouraging, right, or daunting in some ways, but at the same time, because we've worked with a lot of developers all over the country, these are kind of the numbers they want to look for. They want to see high occupancy rates. They want to see some level of growth in certain income levels, those kind of things. A lot of the data I'm sharing with you, and I'm continuing to share with you here this evening, these are things they're looking for. So this is obviously, this is a great opportunity for development and investment in Hopkinsville. And then I showed you that just the rents, the affordable tax credit rents versus the market rate stuff. Really, the takeaway, market rate should be higher than tax credit because tax credit's capped under the program. But to me, the takeaway here is you do have a lot of rentals that are getting rents over $1,000. So again, maybe some of the, some folks might have a challenge with being able to pay that rent. But again, if you think from developer and investor standpoint, there's an opportunity to get some good rents here. It's been proven, the market's been doing it. So again, that would be another data point that developers and investors are going to look at. All right. So if you can't rent an apartment, what else can you rent? These are non-conventional rentals. And so it's single-family homes, duplexes, mobile homes, things like that. We found what's available, 33 of those. My staff's really good at trying to find these, 43 in the rest of the county. When I look at what you, your rental stock versus what's available, we have, again, just like the apartments, we want a vacancy rate or occupancy rate within a certain range. Your vacancy rate and not occupancy, the vacancy rate for those, for here in Hopkinsville for those non-conventional rentals is at six tenths of a percent. You want that to be about four to six. So it doesn't matter if you're trying to find an apartment, you don't have a lot to choose from, especially the affordable stuff. Okay, let me go rent a house, a duplex or something. 33 might feel like, okay, we have some choices, but proportionally, it's low. You still just don't have a lot of available rental housing. This is your for sale market. Some of you might be interested in this. So the blue bar represents the number of homes that were sold on an annual basis from 2021 up through 2024. And then the green line with the black number shows you the median sales price. Look at the dramatic change just since 2021. You're at 150,000, almost $151,000. In the 2024, the average sales price was 220,000. 28,000 increased just over that past year, that 23 to 2024. So one of the things that we see all over the country, and it happened here too, in 2022 and 2023, look at the volume of homes sold, kind of flattened out, median prices flattened out. That was when interest rates kicked in and did what they did all over the country, including here in Hopkinsville. But now you can see you're starting to go back up again in terms of price points. And so affordability has been a challenge for some of the folks, especially for homeownership, and you can see home prices are escalating again. That will make that a continued challenge. Well, we found 159 homes that were available in the county, 88 in the city, 71 in the rest of the county. We broke it out by those different price points. You can see the bulk of what you have available in both the city and the rest of the county is in that $299,000 range. Within the city, which is that PSA number inside that graph, you have a median list price of 229, rest of the county, 245, affordable here in the city. But again, these numbers relative to the entire housing stock, still not very much available to purchase regardless of the price point that we talked about. And then we broke it out by year, just because one of the things I wanted to look at was how much does year play in price point? And we do break it out and study, you know, year built, average prices, bedroom types, many different ways. But I just wanted to look at the graph real quick, just to understand, you know, is, is age playing into some of the pricing? And it is. Some of the stuff that is affordable, especially the stuff that's under $200,000, is pretty old stuff. And you can see in the blue bar, that's again, the city versus the royal bars, the rest of the county, and most of the housing stock in the city is pretty old. So it is keeping prices down. But with that said, it's not universally true, but when you have older stock, it's often has other issues with it, you know, weatherization, other quality issues. That's why that housing is often affordable. Next slide. So one of the things we were asked to spend some time, and again, folks at the city were incredibly helpful, was to look at residential blight. And so essentially, that is housing that's showing, this is just the exterior of units that we looked at. And the city helped us get a lot of stuff through code enforcement, but I actually had staff drive up and down every single street, inventory, what we consider blighted housing. So again, housing that was in disrepair, shingles missing, windows either boarded up or partially missing roofs, or whatever it might be. And so we came back with these 401 homes. The key takeaway on this one is, when I take those 400 homes and compare it to your entire housing stock, that represents about 2.8% of the housing stock, and that, that may feel small to people. Okay, we only have less than 3% of our housing stock blighted. We have studied over 100 markets around the United States. If you go over 1%, you've got a problem, right? You have a disproportionately high share of blight. And so you're three, almost four times really where what we see as normal residential blight. I know you guys have done a lot of things. You have a lot of programs in place, but you still have some work ahead of you with residential blight. One of the benefits of us doing this, again, I know you've been addressing blight, but we've mapped everything. And so it would help if a strategy was to go in and look, look at a certain street block where it's concentrated, or a certain street, or a part of the city, you now know where that's located. You probably know some of it just from living here and being here. But now you have it quantitatively. We show you where that, that housing stock, that blighted stock is. I'll try to speed this up. I would just have a few more slides. All right. So we got a lot of information from folks like yourselves, stakeholders, community leaders. We asked them, we, we had tons of questions and answers. I just put a handful up here. But in the end, the biggest takeaway from the folks that we talked to, we got 25 different community leaders to respond to this, it's availability and affordability. So a lot of the data I've already showed you here tonight, in terms of lack of available housing, lack of affordable housing, the stakeholders are echoing what we found. What type of housing's needed? Rentals, less than 1,250 homes primarily under $200,000. It's another, common barriers to development. It's the cost of land is what folks are telling us is the biggest chance. We didn't study that. We can, but we didn't study the cost of land here, and then availability of land. Again, we didn't look at what you have available. We have the capacity to do that if that's something you all would need later. But I will tell you, what is different about your community than a lot of communities, when we ask stakeholders a question like that, what's your barrier to development? Yeah, they'll mention cost of land, but it's usually construction costs, government fees, taxes. Those didn't make the top answers here. So you are, you are in a better position than a lot of communities that we survey and ask those kind of questions of what kind of things is holding back housing. And nonetheless, cost of land is certainly the biggest factor. That's probably it for that one. And then employers, we got 19 different employers to respond to us. And so I'll skip to the second one on there because we asked the question, how does housing impact the employers themselves? And again, there's a lot of things that affect employers and why they can function and be successful. But when we asked them the question, is housing impacting you? And if so, what way? 36% of them told us, excuse me, 36% told us they are having difficulty attracting workers. And that's probably pretty in line with what we see in other markets around the country. But again, employers are having a challenge here. What's changing around the country, and it's reflective here in Hopkinsville, is that second one in that, again, how, how, how is housing impacting employers? And that's difficulty retaining employers. When we did this survey pre-COVID, that was most markets, 5%. But things have changed because of COVID in many ways, as we all know. So it used to be, again, attain, trying to attract workers to our community was a big challenge. That number keeps creeping up for the retaining employees. I'm seeing it all over the country now, where it wasn't just one problem with housing and what it does to my company, it's retaining the current employees. And so you can see one out of five employers, that's, that is a problem. It's affecting them as well. One other thing I want to mention on here, we, it's the third one on there, it's the likelihood of hiring if housing issues were resolved or addressed. And you have almost half of those employers saying, look, I'd hire more if we can address our local housing issues. And that's probably pretty in line, if, if not maybe a little bit higher than a lot of the markets we see, but still similar, and still, the employers are saying, hey, this is affecting my ability to expand and grow. Next slide. And then we have the housing gap numbers. It says a lot of stuff goes into this. I won't take you through that. Study does detail that. Rental gaps are on the top half, for sale housing gaps are on the bottom half. In the end, it's split almost evenly. Again, 3,100 housing units are needed if you want to solve everything over the next five years, which is going to be probably impossible for a lot of communities. But it does give you at least targets to shoot for, especially when we broke it out by affordability levels. So the cheaper rents or the cheaper home prices will be on the topper, top part of those. those lists there. So for the most vulnerable, economically vulnerable renter households in the area, rentals under a thousand dollars is the greatest need. But for the for-sale side, it's really anything under $321,000, you have a significant need for that product as well. So this is obviously something that can be used as you start to set priorities and goals for the community. Next slide. And then this is the last slide. So it's the recognition. And so we have the goals now, or at least numbers that you can use for goals and other numbers that are in the study too, that could be helpful if you wanted to look at, how much do we focus our efforts or resources? And it's not just local government, it's other participants. But where do we focus our efforts? It could be on senior housing versus family housing. It could be renovating existing housing stock or preserving the existing housing stock, but adding new housing stock. You have all kinds of numbers in this report now that will help guide those kinds of decisions versus gut feel or what you're hearing from others. You have something to at least point to. Capacity building, essentially what that means is you need somebody to lead your housing efforts. So I know the city can play a role in that, but a lot of communities will have an organization or establish a task force or a committee, coalition, call it what you will. Some people, and it's not me, some people bring consultants in to say, look, here's our goals, or at least walk us through some goals. Let's start thinking about possibilities, incentive programs, or whatever it is we want to do. But somebody has to be the leader on this because if you really want to move the needle, you have to have somebody in charge. We did not look at any of your programs or policies, land use, any of that stuff, but there are things that can be done. So we can certainly give examples of that. We have a link in the study itself that points you to a resource that gives you all kinds of strategies that you can at least look at and start to investigate. Is this something that would help us solve issue one or issue two, whatever it is that you're trying to solve in terms of your housing stock? Again, I mentioned blight, blight mitigation. You, you've made a lot of efforts, you've done some good things, but you've got a ways to go. So there's obviously things that you can do. We have another link in there, blight mitigation strategies. And even, probably many of you don't know, Troy attended college, got his master's, I believe, in Huntington, West Virginia. And we did a very comprehensive Huntington, West Virginia housing study and focused really on blight. And so Huntington, West Virginia is a good model for, for communities like yours. If that's something you want to go after, you definitely want to see what Huntington, West Virginia's done. Education outreach, we're doing some of that right now, right? With you all and the public. We have another meeting tomorrow with the public right here at the same place, 10:00 a.m. So that will be part of our effort to continue to educate folks and decision makers like yourselves on what does housing mean for the community. There's a lot of things you can do to identify potential development partners. There's a lot of marketing things you could do. I've seen some really cool things that communities have done if they really want to start to get developers into the community, investment into the community. I can give you a lot of good examples and point you to different communities, show you what they arranged and marketing material they put together. And the other thing, again, I don't put this in here very often, it's the very last one, and that was some kind of marketing plan or strategy to try to attract some of those 14,000 people to commute into this community. Now first, you got to have the housing forum, right? But at some point, you want to show them, why would somebody want to live here? Not just housing alone, but other assets within the community. So there's a lot of good stuff you can do that I can give you, guide you towards examples, try to attract some of those folks. So I know I went a little bit just past my time. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have. Thanks, and thanks for letting me do this.
Any questions for Patrick?
I got a couple I'd like. First of all, thank you. This is overwhelmingly informative. So bear with me for a minute. I'm curious, what is, what is considered the affordable housing price? Like what price, if you're talking about building, is considered to be under that affordable housing? Is there a?
Yeah, we, I put the exact numbers, again, if you're talking about where the greatest need is and what I might be calling affordable.
Well, okay, I guess maybe that's where I was confused. So maybe I'm a little different in the sense that I don't believe that you can build around poverty. You have to outgrow it. You have to build to outgrow it. And in doing that, you have to have, in a sense, housing, as you mentioned, to attract professionals in here, you know, level incomes in order to start raising our tax base. And when we could do that, then we bring opportunities to our whole community. So I guess my question is more along the lines of, do we need to be building $100,000 homes, $200,000 home, $400,000? I know that there's a need for all, but when you're talking about trying to cause your whole community as a whole to be able to benefit from bringing that extra tax base and everything in, what is the need there? And then at 14,000 of that workflow, do you have any idea what base of income or housing that workflow is? Because I agree, that's, that's 14,000 potential.
Residents.
Residents and more tax income, you know, coming into the city, which allows us better services for fire, EMS, everything else. So how, so what is the plan there?
Okay. So they, we show on that table the commuters that are coming in, and I didn't say it, but it was up on that table. I think more than, close to half of those commuters make over $40,000 a year. Unfortunately, the data provider, that's their cutoff for the highest income. So I don't know how many of those are 16,000 or higher, 70,000, whatever it is. But half of them make decent incomes, but they're not staying here. Now, in, you don't have a lot for them to choose from to rent or to buy. If I'm answering, if I'm interpreting your question about the affordability and the price point and adding certain product, just a possibility. But if you were to build that housing, let's say it was in the mid-200s hypothetically, or maybe even $300,000, there will be people that would obviously come here to the community because they would look for that type of housing. Some of your residents can't move up, right? You don't have a place for them to move up. So if you built that, then you've got housing that now gets freed up for maybe that first time home buyer. I'll give you another example. There's, there's a lot of solutions, so I could talk hours for this. But you don't have housing for your seniors to downsize into. So, but if you did, you probably have a lot of senior homeowners, not all, but a lot of them would want to downsize because they can't physically maintain their homes, they don't want to be in the size of that home, financially it's a burden, whatever it might be. So if you were to build senior oriented housing, and that's many types of housing could meet the needs of seniors, well, then that frees up that housing stock for those folks. So you can build housing for one segment that solves multiple housing segments, right? It's just a matter of where are your priorities, what kind of things can, can be done, what kind of developers will you get here to attract to the community that would want to come in and build that type of product? Did I answer that, your question?
I think so, just as, you know, the decades that I've lived here, it feels like a lot of times that we're not bringing in enough to attract those 14,000 when it comes to the housing market. And I guess that's where I'm really trying to hone in. Because I think that's the key to, I'm sure that through your time throughout, at least Kentucky, you, we're one of the most impoverished communities in the state. The blight probably helps speak for that on its own. And trying to figure out how we get some of that attraction that Clarksville, Tennessee has seen so much of with the housing market there that are extremely high. How do we get some of that here so it starts raising our income levels for everyone and bringing more opportunities for all of our citizens?
Let me just add real quick, sorry to interrupt you. One, we did Clarksville study, so if you'd like to see what Clarksville's happening there, what their needs, their, their trends are. One of the things I would suggest, is to say Patrick Vaughn was in charge of housing. You appointed me as the housing czar. One of the things I, I would want to do is one, get some kind of group together, let's start talking about housing issues and educate you all. You have a lot of things you got to deal with. So housing cannot be your only priority. Tonight, you're going to have other things after me. And so you do want some group that dedicates a lot of time to this. You could bring in somebody that's an expert on housing, financing, land use, I mean, all those kinds, there's people out there that do that. Maybe they work with a committee, or maybe they don't, maybe they just work with the city officials or whatever. But you could have somebody that's basically spearheading your, your housing issues. The other thing I would do, I put on a high priority, and it's, it would not be complicated and wouldn't cost much at all, is having some kind of housing event, housing forum. I've seen communities do something really cool. It's called, they call it Developer Day. And what they do is they, they package a half of a day, for example, where maybe I'd speak to talk about the housing issues and opportunities, but maybe they have somebody from the planning department, the zoning or whatever, have an elected official, other people, maybe somebody from the state, the Economic Development Office or local regional Economic Development Office, but other people that are educating developers on, here's opportunities in Hopkinsville. And what they often do is they'll even package a site tour. You know, we didn't study sites, but you could have potential sites that you take into some existing buildings that are abandoned, old school, old church, warehouse, something like that, maybe taking some big parcels. But what you're doing is you're, you're basically telling the development community, look, we know there's a need, we have it documented, but we as a community are, we want you to come here. And that's not common, right? I work with, again, we probably do over 500 studies a year for individual developers. There's not that many communities that open their arms to them, right? So you could be different. You, you have an advantage right now because you have a study. But you can leverage that now and say, look, come to us, we want to be a part, at least look at our community and have a conversation with us. So I've seen some really cool stuff. I can give you all kinds of examples. And I have seen it where communities get multiple developers that they never would have thought they would have had, but they did a Developer Day following a housing study like this. And there's other housing events, forums, marketing, all kinds of cool stuff. But that would be what I would do to start getting things going.
Thank you very much. I like that. Any other questions?
All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yep. Patrick will be here tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. in this chamber for community, if you're interested.
All right. We'll go into item B, quarterly police report. Call on Chief Jason Newby.
Good evening, everybody. So our second quarter of the year, HPD, we made 586 arrests. Eighty-five of those were from traffic stops, 251 of those were criminal arrests. We arrested 15 juveniles. We served over 235 arrest warrants and we answered a little over 11,000 calls for service. Collisions, we had 213. Unfortunately, we did have five fatalities in the city. Two of those fatalities were double fadals, and we had a single fatality off of North Drive. Property damage other than vehicles, we had 169, and we also had 71 injuries of those collisions. Citations, we issued over 863, 252 of those were traffic, 291 were criminal, and 41 citations were issued to juveniles. So one of the biggest requests that, that I received when I became chief from the mayor and the citizens were guns and drugs. That, that's what we have been focusing on. The second quarter, we only seized a couple of hundred dollars in cash, but that's good because although we can use cash to buy equipment, things like that, if you get the cash, that means the drugs have already hit the streets and been sold. This quarter, we got more drugs off the streets than we have the entire time that I've been here. We got 34 guns off the streets. We got 43.4 pounds of meth off the streets. Fentanyl, we got 5.68 pounds. But that perspective, the last time I did my quarterly report, I showed you a picture. The, the FDA shows that two milligrams of fentanyl, which just goes on the tip of a pencil, is what's considered a lethal dose. To break that down, 5.68 pounds is a little over 1.2 million lethal doses of fentanyl that we took off the streets in Hopkinsville. Marijuana, 33.9 pounds, and cocaine was 15.19 pounds. So that's a lot of drugs that we took off the streets in, in the second quarter. Special events, if you all have any special events you want to have in your ward, please let me know whether it's to come to speak, whether it's to cook out, have a basketball game with the youth. We don't care what it is. We just want to have the opportunity to engage with the community. That gives you an opportunity to meet with us and your constituents. We can hear their concerns, you can hear their concerns. They can put a name with a face, it just allows us to, just, just to bond with the community, which is one of our biggest goals. So if you all have anything at all that you would like the PD to do, please don't hesitate to reach out. We'd love to be out there. Again, I, I've told you all in the past, if, if there's different stats that you all want to hear, please let me know. I've not had any new requests, that's why you're getting the same stats. If you want us to break down stats that are just in your ward, we can do that as well. And it doesn't have to be these stats, it could be any, any type of stats, whether it's speeding citations we issued, where we issued them, collisions in your ward, where most of the collisions are happening in your ward. We have the ability to break it down, any statistic you want, whether it's ward specific or all over the whole city. So if there's anything that you would like to know or anything that you would like us to do in your wards, please, please let us know. And any questions?
I've actually got a question, maybe not, just a comment. I know us and the community, we're quick to tell you when you screw up. Can you, can you tell us about the water rescue that took place a few days ago?
Sure. So we received the call that a vehicle had went off of the road. Apparently he went off 41A, went probably a quarter of a mile through a field and into what they called floodwaters. But in that area, the, it's, it's actually two giant sinkholes that look like small ponds is what they are. But they were probably 40, the vehicle was probably 40, 50 yards out of, of the, into the water. We couldn't see inside the vehicle. The hood of the vehicle was flipped up and crushed. The top of the vehicle was steadily going down. So we had two officers that took their gun belts off and went in the water, made it out there to the gentleman. Apparently he had a medical episode is what caused him to go off. He had probably about six inches of air pocket left. And, but they were able to get him out of the vehicle and get him back to the shore. They took him to the ER and checked him out, and I think he's going to be okay.
Awesome. Thank you.
That's good. I have a question.
Yes, sir.
From the seizure list that you had, is it possible to generate just an Excel spreadsheet of some kind telling us where those came from by ward?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely.
I'd love to get that in an email.
Yeah, absolutely. You want it in, in each ward or just your ward or?
Whichever's easiest.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I'd like to see it by ward, all 12, if we could.
Sure. Yeah, I could do that.
Thank you.
Also, last, last Monday, we started, or I started a chat with the chief on Facebook Live. It, it gives the public an opportunity to message instantly any questions that they have. We've had a good response, and since we did it last Monday and this Monday, we've had roughly, I think, 50,000 views. News Channel 5 caught wind of it. They will be here Monday to sit in on the chat with the chief. They're going to do a new story on it. So just let your people know if they want to engage with me. They can talk, they can schedule appointments one-on-one, they can come in. I've already had some people do that. It's, it's, it's growing. So just, just let your folks know if they have any questions and want to, you know, want to speak live, or if they don't want to do it on Facebook Live, they can come in and speak with me.
Questions?
I would just like to say, Chief Newby, on July 31st, will be at the East Second Street at the Kenner Bates Building. I will be barbecuing, so if y'all want to come out and, you know, talk to the chief, you know, there's an opportunity to.
Yep, absolutely.
All right.[1679.83]
All right. Thank you all.
Good deal. Thank you. Go to item C, quarterly business list review. The business list was in your package. Does anybody have any questions or any changes to the business list? If none, we'll go to item D, monthly agency board council appointee report. Go to Ward 7, Councilmember Sumner.
Up Town helps informationally coming up shortly.
Yes, sir. All right. Item 6, unfinished business. We have no unfinished business, so we'll go to item 7, new business. Hopkinsville Solid Waste Enterprise will call on Lee Durden and Mayor Wendell Lynch. Or just Lee. Yeah.
Good evening. I'm Lee Durden, excuse me, I'm Lee Durden and I'm currently the chairman of the Hopkinsville Solid Waste Board. I have been the board chairman since July of '24. First, I would like to thank the committee of the hall for allowing Hopkinsville Solid Waste to make the presentation tonight. Before we begin the presentation, I would like to introduce our board members. They are Wendell Lynch, who is vice chairman, Chrissy Fletcher, David Collins and Chuck Crabtree. I want to say that the board has made a lot of positive changes over the last 18 months. In November of '24, following an extensive nationwide search, the board appointed Brian Silver to serve as the general manager. Brian served as the interim general manager since April of '24. Also, in late '24, the board hired Kim Wilcox as the administrative HR manager. And in May of this year, the board hired Logan Askew as our board attorney. In addition, we have established and implemented financial policies and procedures and revised and updated other policies and procedures. Before I turn the presentation over to Wendell, I want to personally thank the mayor for offering the city's help when we needed it over the last 18 months. I would like to thank Melissa Clayton and her staff for the many hours of hard work and financial oversight. I want to thank Kenny Grabara for assisting Hopkinsville Solid Waste with our HR needs. I want to thank Doug Willen for stepping in to provide legal guidance. And I also want to thank Troy Body for assisting with the general manager search. I'll now turn the presentation over to Wendell.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello, sir.
And thank you for having me out today. I am Wendell Lynch and about a year ago, the mayor asked me to go on this board and I've been happy to serve since June of last year. You've really got a good board. Now, in your package, there's a little information that's really cut and dry, it's pretty specific. Didn't want to bombard you with a lot of data, but we're open to answer any questions as we get into the presentations and so forth. The Solid Waste Board, as you know, basically we are citizen servants and our responsibility is to understand the enterprise and through the executive management and staff to manage the enterprise and its resources and to understand its financial needs, its cash inflows, its cash outflows. You've got a board that really understands that. They are really focused on that. Actually, when I came on board about a year ago and stood at the financials, we really needed to come to you then, right then, but the timing would not have been right. Chairman Lee had during this explained that we understood there were other priorities, a lot of other priorities, that this was quite long. And we have focused on those priorities because you got to get things done in a proper sequence. Having most, all those in place and functioning now, which included our HR person, included our new general manager, which included first-time financial management policies, which included updating our personnel policy manual and bringing it up to date. And ultimately, didn't know it, but we, our attorney retired and so we had to do a search there and to do that as well. So all those things are really much more important, but equally important. And we engaged the services of the city in the HR area and also in the area of financial management and accountability through your CFO's office. All those are really primary. So the board really understands our needs and how to move forward in a methodical way. So that brings us here today. After doing those things, we really need to focus on the financial part. We knew there was a need, we understood it, but we had to get other things done first. Before you today, I actually two requests. One is more of an acknowledgement. The first one is a request and it may be on the screen. In your packets, I hope you had a chance to review that data. Hope it didn't confuse you. But really, our principal request is number one, well, we asking the city to do something for us that we probably, the ship probably should have been done many years ago when this component unit was spun off and established. And that is to empower the Hopkinsville Solid Waste Enterprise to pass through the pilot of payment in lieu of taxes that the city asks us to fund. And basically, if you understand what that is, a lot of, lot of, if you, if you don't pay taxes to the city, that is a way to get revenue in. Now, we started, the enterprise started paying that when it was established. That is a cost of doing business. The enterprise was so young and new, they didn't realize they needed a source to offset that revenue. And so that's what we're coming to you now. More recently, the Hopkinsville Water Environment Authority did this when we required them to pay a pilot, but we also enabled them to go ahead and pass it through at that time. But Hopkinsville Solid Waste Enterprise did not do that. And so that has really become an albatross around our neck financially. It's an expense, but we cannot pass that, we're not passing that through to our ratepayers, those who benefit from our services. So we're asking the city, because we pass through to you, this will make it a revenue-neutral transaction. Basically, the funds that we take in, our passes through, are actually the funds we transfer to the city for you all to use. We estimate this year that that will be approximately $430,000 based on the trend over the past years. So really and truly, Mr. Chairman, and I'll open it up for questions, that is the gist of our request. The other part of the request, when we talk about recycling, that has also been a subject of drain. Both of these have had to drain our, substantially drain our reserves. And so we at the point now where we need to begin to address building those reserves back and also some of that funds we needed in current operations. So that is the nature of the request. It would actually put us on the equal footing with other component units who are passing this through and basically makes it revenue-neutral to them. They get it from the taxpayer, they give it to the city, or the ratepayers, they give it to the city. We've actually been absorbing that for a long time and it has created some financial negatives for the enterprise. So I'm going to pause, Mr. Chairman. If you want me to go on into the second presentation, I can do that. Or we can, I can field questions and have to clarify any misunderstandings.
Is there any questions? Any questions right now?
Yeah, I would have a question. Mr. Lynch, thank you for being here, by the way, and thank you for all that Hopkinsville Solid Waste does. I appreciate my solid waste being picked up as it is. With the request that you're making, that would be keeping the services the same as it is right now?
It would.
Okay.
It would. There would be no dilution in services whatsoever.
Okay. Thank you. For lack of anything else, I might, if it's time is proper, I might make a motion to pass that request along to council.
I've got some questions, actually.
Okay.
Internally, so we're talking about passing this, it's $3.02, is that right? We're passing it on to the consumer, is that correct?
That is a calculation based on projected 2025, 2026 budget.
Okay.
It equates to 5% of our gross. That is the numerical number. So it will actually equivocate out to that, whatever that is.
So have you looked internally to see if there's any way to save any money as far as?
Oh, absolutely.
Operations.
Absolutely. Many of the things what we talked about earlier, our initiatives to save money, we are peeling back the layers on everything. There are no sacred cows. We are still learning, but we are peeling back the layers on everything. We focused on the administrative piece and now we have to focus more specific on the financial piece. We've got to find ways to be, I'm saying to be a reserve. Our reserves have diminished radically and we've got to find ways to do it. Still got to run the show. And I'm going to tell you, we have a phenomenal staff. Service to the city has not diminished in any category, even though behind the scenes, we have to deal with some things that have reduced our ability to earn and save money.
Have you actually considered cutting any services? Like I know, like on my trash day, I have three trucks that go by my house every day. There's recycling, the pickup truck and then the knuckle boom. Have you considered maybe scaling back the knuckle boom to two weeks or, I mean?
All those things are in a chronological order. We are looking and looking at all those things. Had a conversation about that today with our general manager.
Yeah.
That particular one, you wouldn't save a lot because you're going to still have to deal with the same volume where you pick it up this week or two weeks from now. But we're going to look, peel back all layers, I have to be honest. Because this revenue will not solve all of our problems, but it will save off some issues.
You know as well as I do, if we vote to raise these rates and it's a tax increase to the citizens, it's a, I understand that, but it's going to be tough.
Well, it's really not a tax increase.
I know, yeah.
Because we don't function on any tax dollars.
Right.
I need to make that clear. We don't get not one cent of tax dollars. We function on fees. We provide service.
Right.
And we get very few complaints about the service. When we have weather events, we spend the money for overtime, our staff volunteers, we get it done. We haven't increased our commercial rates since our inception. We're going to be coming back, probably first quarter next year, to have a more in-depth discussion on that. Residential rates, we have increased a little bit on a phase-in model over the last few years, but we've been doing what we're doing on the same dollar for a long time.
Other questions?
What percentage of an increase would this $3.02 be per customer?
Now, how we arrived at that number is pretty simple. The money you all have asked us for, divided by our ratepayers, which is just south of 12,000, gives you an annual number and divided by 12, that's the projected number, that's 302. Now, what percentage that is, I would have to look at what they're currently paying and see what that overlays to them. But the fee that they're currently paying for garbage services and all of that, I can't give you an exact amount. It'd be a little bit different for residential than it would be for non-residential. Be happy to get that for you, get it back to you.
Really love to see it.
It would be pretty nominal. It'd be pretty nominal.
Questions?
Piggybacking on what Councilmember Martin said, with the services thing. And I'm asking more so so I have an answer to give back to people in the ward specifically that were inquiring about it. Things that other entities in our community provide service for, like roll-offs. Have things like that been looked at for cutting costs? The things that there's other entities out there, private industry, that can take over that service? And what does that elimination result in and money saved? If you take away, I know it may be personnel, but vehicles as well that are specific to them?
Good observation. We're going to look at all of that, I'm being honest.
But that hasn't been done yet.
We're in the discussion stage, but we haven't peeled the layers back on the numbers. I mean, you might see us at some point decide to outsource some things. We're going to have to make ourselves more efficient. Our people get the work done. We are very equipment intense. You all know that.
Yes, sir.
We've been leasing equipment for some times to try to mitigate, you know, the quality and uptime for our equipment. We're looking at that also. We're going to make some changes in that area as well.
Well, that was a good point. You mentioned the equipment side of it with the trucks and all. Now, I know we do the lease program and I think it's great. Sounds great in theory, but what kind of cost comes with that with trading the vehicle in every year? Specifically when we're dealing with diesels, like some of the trucks that are diesels that are geared to last hundreds of thousands of miles and we're putting them back up every year. I get, I want to make sure before we do a tax that isn't a tax, because they have a better word for it, but as the citizen will feel like it's a tax, as Councilmember Morris said. I just want to make sure, obviously, the board is stacked full of highly intelligent individuals. I could see that with all of you all here. But I want to make sure that I can go back to my constituents and tell them, all these things were looked at. These were done before we did this.
Let me give you the assurance, you can go back to your constituents' memo, your board is looking at that. We actually had a meeting today on that very area. We had suppliers that we buy trucks, a lease firm, those that build and install the beds and even the auction companies that bid and sell them after. Had them all in the room today. And this was first of probably more than one meeting. And we talked about those very things. We're going to get those costs down or we're going to change the program. I'm going to tell you, your board understands what's going on. And we're doing it in a methodical order. We can't do it all at once. But we've got to do two things. We've got to cut costs and we've got to increase revenues. And we've got to manage those things to our greatest benefit. We have got to increase our reserves. Our reserves have gone down radically. And, you know, there's a lot of reasons for it. I'm not here to whine and complain, but once you understand what's going on, you have to put in, implement measures to address that. And this is one of them. We've been handing the city 400-plus thousand dollars. We have not been able to pass that through. We need those funds. And when we talk about the recycling program, it kind of speaks for itself when you look at the numbers.
So when you all continue this brainstorming session and you all get further along, I know we're talking about what we need now, but you get further along. If those things come back to the point of where it gives you the savings that was needed prior to implementing this, there a way to recall it or is what this is in, it's in forever?
You can always amend the ordinance once it's amended. It can be looked at again.
I know it's a hypothetical and that's a wishful thinking probably, but I think it makes everybody at least have a peace of mind that if throughout your all's time, you all are able to find all these other ways that there is the option and possibilities that could.
I hope you appreciate the fact, I've seen it since our inception, we haven't increased rates to commercial and business. I mean, that's really a negative for us, because the enterprise has needed to. So your board understands and we want to, something we probably haven't been doing is coming on a, on a set periodic basis and giving updates and so forth. And I hope that that would be welcomed because we need to do that. We're going to have to come back and review not only rates, but some of the language and ordinances needs to be addressed to make it more up-to-date with the way we're applying those.
I don't know the answer to this, but that pilot that you all pay us, that 430,000, is that, can we pause that for, I mean, if they're?
That will solve the problem.
Obviously, they're broke. I mean, they're out of funds.
Out of our requests.
I mean, is that an option?
It's always an option.
I mean, if they don't have the money and they need help, can we take care of that versus raising the rates on our citizens? That's what I'm asking. Because we just heard, we heard a report about medium income in this town and it's not great. So $3 to me is not that big of a deal, but somebody on a fixed income is a huge deal. So it's just an option. I'm just asking questions.
We did budget for a full collection of the pilot in fiscal year '25, '26. What you would be doing is decreasing the city's revenue by $430,000.
How much do we have in our?
We're on July 17th. I can't tell you if revenues are going to come in, come in greater or less than. I've had 17 days in this fiscal year, so.
I mean, we got $400,000. I mean, we can, I think we can come up with that. Or something we do with the ambulance board, we loan the ambulance board $500,000 to get them through for a while. Is that something?
We only loan.
I have a sudden like.
Yes, sir.
Well, I haven't been on this board very long. But I can say this is that you think going into it, picking up garbage and trash is a simple business. It's really complicated and there's a lot of moving parts to it. The other two things that I've seen, Solid Waste has absorbed additional cost. Pilot being one, the other is, and Wendell will show you that in just a minute, but it is the recycling program. So they've done more, but they haven't gotten paid more. So as time goes on, what was a surplus years ago, and there's other factors involved that Wendell's mentioned, but over the time, it starts dwindling down. And that's kind of where Solid Waste is today, is that they've been giving too much, we're not charging enough for far too long to basically stay viable. The other thing that we don't think about, hey, the road, the road's done, okay? And then 10 years later, you go do it again. When Brian and them put their, you know, our trash in the landfill here, when that fills up, that section, I think you call it a cell.
Yes.
They close it up and they get all the things that they're supposed to do to close it up. But there's some, Wendell was talking about building up some reserves. It's like, I think it's a 20-year period that that has to be monitored, okay? And controlled and monitored and things go wrong, they have to fix it. The city owns that. I mean, it's the city's landfill. So we're going to be responsible for it one way or another, whether they build up or not, so. That's all.
I think I'd just be interested in hearing more about this, the 430,000, the pilot program and us being able to maybe give them a year's worth of relief to possibly help out versus passing it on to the consumer.
Well, if I can speak to that.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, our planning is long-term.
Sure.
I'll be candid, a year will not suffice for what we're doing. And one thing I haven't mentioned, I don't want to scare you to death, is we have a significant outlay related to something Councilmember Crabtree just talked about. It's going to take place within the next three to four, five years. So when I said build reserves, we're going, we're building reserves to address current needs, but also future needs and significant dollar expenditures related to the landfill sale. When they fill up, you got to close them, monitor them, but you have to develop a new one before you can close them. And so we're making plans for our next sale that we're going to have to develop. Unfortunately, the last one we developed, we didn't get good information and its lifespan is going to be much shorter than we were promised. So we're doing a lot of long-term planning. And so you're talking about expense controls. We're going to cut some expenses because that's going to be part of the way we build reserves is internally, but we also need to build them through revenue increases.
Is this what you're asking for here? Does that take in effect? Is, we're not going to sit here next year or in two years and talk about needing to raise the rates also? Is this what you believe will get us through having to do something else?
Okay.
I'd rather rip the Band-Aid off at once than? I'd rather rip the Band-Aid off at once than every year come back in here figuring out we need to raise another dollar or we need to?
We're gonna have to look at our, our rate structure and the ordinances. Uh, that's part of this process. Uh, and we'll be back and update you on where we are and there will probably be some requests. Uh, nobody's paying the same thing, uh, for services they were paying twenty years ago.
Right.
Uh, and, uh, I'll be honest, our administration has probably been remiss in not, in a small way, coming and increasing it over the years to keep up with inflation and other, other cost increases. So I'm not gonna promise you that we won't keep everything exactly the same. Now, on the residential side, we did, they did come to us and I was like, on council then, and we, we approved some, some, some gradual increases that we implemented over a period of three or four years, uh, and that's working for us.
Yes, ma'am.
But we, these are not taxes. Please, these, these are not taxes.
No, they're not.
These are fees for services.
It's an increase, I mean, all the way around, yeah. Yes, ma'am.
If council decides they wanna forgive the pilot for a year, I think that's a simple MOU, right Doug? We would draw up an MOU between us and solid waste that would forgive the pilot for one year, um, which would give the board more time to, um, do their restructure.
Well, that and, and we're looking at possibly doing something with recycling as well. So that, that's a pretty good, pretty good chunk, pretty good start.
The recycling would be an ordinance amendment, but that would be municipal order to approve the MOU.
That, that's kind of where I'm at. If, if, nobody has to go with me, that's, it's, it's up to the council.
Their revenue shortfall comes from this building.
I mean, I can.
Recycling program was never gonna make money.
Never.
We knew this and we went.
Yeah, and we've held on to it as long as we can.
Double what we're charging anyone else.
Right.
Their revenue shortfall comes from this building. And that landfill is five hundred and fifty acres and you own it.
Yep.
It's yours.
Yep.
And if he doesn't take care of it, the state hits us, they're coming to you.
Right.
Guys, we'll be happy to get what we give us, but we know what we need. We understand the enterprise and its needs. We understand some of the mistakes that have been made in the past. We've got to address those incrementally. Uh, and that, Brian helped me out. That, that new, new sale we're gonna have to build is between four and five million dollars, I believe. Between four and five million. Now, we're already paying for one that, uh, that's not performing, but giving us lifespan that needed. We've got to build, uh, reserves to offset bonding for that. That's part of this process. Uh, and at some point, uh, that four hundred thousand dollars you're talking about, it will help to bond whatever's left. So we can nickel and dime if we want to, but we'll be back because we know the needs of the enterprise.
We were told that sale the last twenty-five years.
We were told it was that, right here, yeah.
Since I've been on council, all I hear about is the mistakes that different departments are making. And sooner or later, it's gonna cost the taxpayers, the citizens of Hopkinsville, money. Man, we, we got to do better. So, so man, cause they trusting us. They putting everything in our hand.
Yeah.
And, and we just somewhere, it's like, it's almost like I think we US Bank instead of a government agency. And I just want everybody in this room, man, let's just do better. We just gotta work together. Come to your board meetings or whatever we got to do to avoid pass, I don't, man, it's three dollars and two cents. It's still gonna be passed off to the, the citizens and look at it as a tax. Cause it's more, it's, it's something that's added on to what they already get. Groceries is high. Everything is high now. And I understand with our situation, hey, man, we gotta do better. And it was a mistake someone made. Someone, somebody gotta stop paying for these mistakes.
We certainly appreciate your questions and your inquiries. Uh, part of our role is to educate and to make you familiar with the details. Uh, because we, we, we're partners in this, we really are. So don't thank, any of us take this personal. We do not.
No, us either. No, for sure.
But we, we are citizen servants and you've tasked us with a task, uh, and we're standing here to tell you what we need. Uh, you can give us a year, but a year, uh, is gonna be a Band-Aid, I'm telling you. Uh, but we know how to move forward and we're gonna continue to find ways to reduce, uh, internal expenses. And those funds can become part of our reserve building. But, uh, you know, i- if you wanna know the plain truth, you're getting it.
All right.
It would be, it would be interesting to find out, you know, what cash reserves, you know, solid waste actually has and what you feel like you actually need and what that gap is.
Sure, our financial CFO could, can help you with that. I can, I can give you some numbers. Uh, she can probably give you the exact numbers. You wanna come up and listen to this, sure? Uh, and, um, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not.
I said.
It's not great.
Um, currently, solid waste has in its operating fund four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Um, to give you a perspective of what that equates to, that's about forty days of cash on hand, maybe forty-two. We have forty-two days cash on hand. Um, we have some big payments we're about to have to pay out, about two hundred thousand dollars worth. Once those are paid, we're gonna have about twenty-eight days cash on hand, which means our payroll that we run every two weeks runs approximately between a hundred and thirty and a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. I am now to the point where I have to start checking the bank account before I process payroll. We are very close to not being able to pay our employees like we need to. Um, we also have a landfill closure account. That landfill closure account currently has about four hundred and seventeen thousand dollars in it. The auditors really want that account to be more, way, way more than that. We're, it, we need to have two or three million dollars in that account and we have four hundred thousand. So we need to build the landfill closure account. What happens when the landfill? This is a plan for what happens when the landfill closes. And they alluded to it earlier, but we have to maintain it. You have to have somebody that works there that monitors the landfill for approximately twenty years. And so you have to have enough saved up to monitor the landfill, um, for that period of time. And if solid waste doesn't have it, that responsibility falls back on the city. So that is our, when, when Troy says that's our landfill, that responsibility, that however much we need to monitor that for twenty years will fall back on us. Um, so we need, we have some serious issues that need to be dealt with and the board is looking at everything. That's where we are. We don't have anything in the capital fund right now. So we have no money in capital. We have.
You know, we've had this discussion so many times, uh, Councilman Sumner mentioned it, and that is, you know, leasing these, uh, vehicles, the five million dollars we pay for that versus owning them along with the maintenance of them and the cost that might be saved there. I mean, they're obviously looking into this. So, you know, the bottom line is it seems, it seems premature that, you know, we would discuss what the actual numbers are. I don't know that, you know, anybody actually has all those final figures, what they have to be. But the bottom line is, you know, I, I would, again, stick with my motion that we pass along to the city council, uh, a motion to consider funding, helping them save.
As far, as far as which, how? Pass it to the consumer or?
Yeah, I mean.
Have you all looked at commercial, raising the commercial rates, Mr. Lynch? Have you all looked at raising the commercial rates?
Uh, we don't want to bombard you too much at one time, but yes, we are looking at that and I said we will probably come back, uh, within the next six months. Uh, we not only need to look at the rates, but look at the language and the ordinances also to make that, uh, appropriate for, for this day and time. So, uh, yes, that, that is all part of it. That is part of it.
I want to say something. One, make sure I'm right, but two, I think is important if, if I am. Melissa, how long has the city of Hopkinsville had our finance people overseeing?
Um, we were brought in April of twenty twenty-four.
I want, I, I just, I think it's very important. It's something that's not being said. Okay, we now have more oversight of what is happening with the funding and everything. Part of this board was put together to go in and figure out what in the world was going on. And through the course of that, getting, uh, Ms. Clayton put over there in the finances now, so going forward, that will continue, I assume, right?
Right.
So we have oversight. We have some better insight into what's going on and how to keep this from ever coming up again. Is that correct?
That's right.
Yes.
You know, I just think it's important for the, for the citizens of the community to understand and realize. You know, this was something that was really pushed on, on us. Uh, it's gone south way before today.
Right.
Um, a solution was designed to, to form a board, put members on there that had a huge understanding of what needed to go on financially, operational wise, and now we're at the point where this is what it's gonna take. And we also have some reassurance to make sure as a council that we're getting information so something like this doesn't go down the same road. I just think that's important to point out.
Mistakes were made in the past. There's nothing we can do about the past.
No, we had mistakes in the past, but Melissa's been there since April. Kenny Cabarr was there when we was doing the HR when we first got back into this. We've hired more people. Wendell stepped up when I called and asked him. I didn't know if he was gonna shoot me or not, but he did. Thank you so very much.
Like it's still pending.
It's still pending. Exactly right. But, uh, we are looking to how we can make sure this board is moving in the right direction. I feel like this board that we have right now is doing a great job. We have a new attorney. We have new board member. We have a new general manager and things that we are looking at. And with this pilot program, do I like it? No. But is it a cost that we're gonna have to do? Yes, we are. And that is in my eyes because when you're sitting here and look at, we haven't raised rates in twenty years on the commercial side. We're been phasing in for the last three, four years on the residential side on rates. We're still behind and then you can look at what we're paying, what we paid for groceries twenty years ago is nothing what we're paying now. So either we're gonna have to do this or we're gonna have to cut services. Or twenty-eight days, it's gonna be back up here in y'all's lap, in my lap, and I will cut services.
Yeah, and, Mr. Councilman Morrison, if you weren't, I, I will, I don't know where you are with the motion, but
We need to, we need to.
I don't mind jumping on that sword and.
Do you mind clarifying your motion? Just go over that again.
Well, I, like I say, Mr. Lynch has mentioned that he's going to come back to us with a request for a rate increase. So we see that. I think we need to see the percentage of what this rate increase would be, plus what they're gonna bring in. And Ms. Clayton can do that, but for right now, just, just for the stopgap measure, just to make sure that they have the funding that they need would be emergency funding, if you wanna call it that, to make that motion. And you, you actually made it. It's just to offer finances from the city to help to cover.
To pause the pilot. Is that what you're saying?
And that would be in the form of an MOU, um, that would be approved by municipal orders then forward that to council.
Okay, so your motion is to forward that to council. Any second?
Certainly.
Second. All right. Any further discussion there?
Just to be sure.
Yes, sir.
We are pausing the payment from, basically from solid waste to the city in the amount of four hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Yes.
For one year.
For one year.
One year, okay.
Yeah, we won't put the amount in there because it's a percentage based on the revenue. So we just will say for one year.
Right.
Um, for this fiscal year, they don't have to pay. It'll go in a MOU that will be signed and y'all will pass it as a municipal order at the next city council meeting.
So I'd like to say one more thing. If, and, and I'm kind of playing devil's advocate here, but if solid waste goes out of business, at the worst case, if, if, if the city of Hopkinsville solid waste did not exist and you go privatize it, you think three dollars and two cents more on somebody's Herbie Kirby is a lot. You probably can think of about twenty bucks a month or more. So.
Yeah, I just, I, I guess I need a little more explanation because I, I'm not fully understanding the concept of why to give them the four hundred and thirty now and at the end of the year, we're still back here, if I'm understanding you.
Exactly.
Grant, Mr. Lynch doing, hey, we still need the three. Why do I just?
And I appreciate that line of thinking. I'm ma- making it very clear. We've got to build reserves. Now, you ask about our current, uh, funds on hands, uh, and Melissa shared with you, that's about a forty-two day. Uh, and, uh, after the next transaction will be down. Uh, let me give you a benchmark. Uh, for businesses, governmental or non-governmental, uh, that benchmark is typically a minimum of ninety days. A target, however, of a one-twenty to one-eighty. If you do the city's calculation, it's probably north of one-eighty right now. Uh, we're not on life support, but we're right there close. And what we're advocating is that you all give us the ability to plan forward. We're gonna have to put this new sale in, uh, whether we got the revenue to pay for it or not. Uh, and it's gonna be in about three to four years. The more funds we have coming in, if, if you approve it the way it's been recommended, we appreciate that. I can almost assure you, we'll be back and ask for an extension on it every year, every year. Because we're gonna use those funds to build reserves. Uh, this year, we'll probably use them in operations to some extent. Uh, but also to underwrite probably, uh, the, a differential on that bond issue. We able to accumulate a million and a half and have to borrow, you know, you know, two point five, uh, that will support the, the debt service on the bond issue. There's gonna be a bond issue because I, we can't accumulate that many funds in that, that timeframe. Uh, our engineers have assured us that probably according to our, uh, general manager, uh, uh, four to six years on the current sale, and I might be stretching it. I hope I'm not.
Ms. Clayton, let me ask you. In your expertise here, I, I guess I'm still having trouble with, here's four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. I'll see you in a couple more months when you ask for the same thing you're asking for now versus just giving you that. Now, I understand this taxing. You're the financial person for us. What is the right, best avenue here? Then I say right, I said best from a financial perspective, because I don't want you to have to worry about getting into, uh, you know, you raise taxes or something like that. I, I need to know from the financial.
My opinion is what I feel like you're asking me for. The whole ordinance needs to be looked at and we need time to do that. Um, the fee schedules need to be looked at. We've got to compare what we're charging with what everyone else around us is charging.
Right.
We need time to do that. Does this give us time to do that? I think so. We may be back in six months and say, we're gonna need this anyway. Or we may look at the fee schedule and say, if you get the fees up here commercially and up here residentially, then we won't have to pass the pilot on. But the whole ordinance needs to be looked at. The wording in the ordinance, it limits them. They can't charge penalty and interest when somebody doesn't pay their bill. Like they, they are very limited by the city ordinance of what they can do. And we need to look at that whole ordinance and the board needs to bring you guys back a recommendation so that we can get the enterprise up financially where it needs to be. So.
So I'll say.
Pausing the pilot will give us time to rewrite the ordinance.
If you call this a Band-Aid right now, then I'm, I'm good with the Band-Aid for now. And then in six months, if they're back and say that it didn't work, then we can look at the citizens and say, we tried.
Yeah.
Yep.
So. I feel like that's what we were doing.
Actually, we're gonna look at everything.
Right.
Uh, but I'll give you the big picture.
Yes, sir.
Your turn, the long term.
Yes, sir.
Uh, and we're on.
Right.
And if you guys want me to send you the solid waste ordinance so you can read the fee schedule, um, I'd be happy to.
That'd be great.
Thank you, Ms. Melissa.
There's a motion and a second on the floor right now.
Yeah, I was just, I was just gonna say that it, it might be nice, you know, I, I know it's not much time before our next meeting when we get together, but any kind of information or update might help us if you could bring that back to the council when we actually discuss this.
Sure.
All right, we'll go ahead and vote on the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay.
Councilmember Martin, can I?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Now, I gotta say, our departments, they're not out there making these mistakes. They're cleaning them up.
Absolutely.
Right, and I'm not putting them out there to pay taxes. That's not happening. We're cleaning up other people's mistakes.
That's a hundred percent.
Came here and been honest for the first time in a long time.
Sure.
But we're not gonna sit here and take those things. That's not.
Nope, for sure.
Well, I hope we're not sounding disparaging, excuse me, you must be. I, I hope we're not sounding disparaging on the departments. I don't think that's the intent.
No.
The bottom line is I think we've all heard of the mistakes that were made at solid waste. I might go further to call it the train wrecks that took place over there. And so, you know.
Honest report we've had.
That's right. That's right.
Here we go. It's now in our lap, you know, so.
Well, I'll let you know, that, that the landfill closure account, Melissa says it's four hundred K now. Uh, when I said where you were sitting, it was at about two point four.
Yeah.
Uh, that's a restricted fund, but those funds were used for other needs within the enterprise. Uh, so we're, we're cleaning that up. It's not gonna happen again.
Yes, sir. All right, new business. We're gonna talk about the recycle program now.
Okay, yes, and, uh, you can flip to that. I hope you all had, had a chance to review it. Uh, many of you are participants in the recycle program. We really appreciate that. Just not enough of you. Uh, and so, uh, I can't add one thing to the data that's in that report. If you look at the trend lines on that, uh, it's, it's, it's really discouraging. Uh, and it has been a significant, uh, uh, And it has been a significant contributor to our decrease in reserves. So we can't afford it anymore.
Right.
It is a city program created by city ordinance, and we have done our best, but the citizens, they don't want the program. You got less than 10% of the citizens that really feel like that going green is the thing to do. We've given it a really good shot. If the count, we've given you some options in there, I hope you review those options. If you can flip to the option page, yeah. We can contain the program, but it would be on your dime. And then we can make it mandatory and you can make everybody mad at you. I'm just kidding.
Yeah.
I wouldn't be. You can also source it to a third party, that typically is a more expensive option, but that is an option. And then the fourth option, we're prepared to to wind it down over the next 90 days if if that's what, if if that's your wish. Floor is open for discussion, questions, what have you.
Any questions? Well, I've been one that would hate to see this go, but I mean, you just look at losses since 2011, it's almost 2.4 million dollars. So that you all have paid, covered, not not the city, so. There's just not enough participation. Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion for them to wind it down 90 days, we have to cut.
That's right.
Second.
Too much money.
All right, motion and a second, any further discussion on that?
Well, it's always something that we can bring back if we want to. I think, you know, part of the sell to us for recycling was that if we're wanting to attract those same people we were just talking about in the housing report, one of the things that they kind of look at is that, that was a selling point to us in the, in the, you know, original amount. But, you know, one of the things that we talked about originally was if it doesn't work, we can come back and revisit it and fix it, and that sounds like where we're at, so.
Which is not successful.
Carter was mayor, councilmembers, we were trying to get that TDA goat standard, and we got it.
And we got it.
This was part of it, but China and other Asian, Southeast Asian countries were buying, I don't know why, our recycling, they stopped. They just quit. We're not really recycling. A lot of this is going in the landfill.
Yes, sir. Yeah, it's contaminated recycling.
We have the red can, but it's just going in the landfill.
That's right. All right, motion and a second on the floor, let's go ahead and vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
We'll, with your permission, we'll plan to come back in first quarter.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, item B, fiscal year 2526, capital budget amendment. Ms. Melissa Clayton.
All right, so you have in your packet the capital budget amendment. This budget amendment includes the two capital expenses we have become aware of in the last few months since we planned the capital budget. Where we have some property acquisition and we need to transfer the playground, park, the the playground money to the Rotary Park Playground Fund. We would like to use the money that is left in the ARPA fund and close that account out. And we also had planned $95,000 in grant matching fund when we had two other grants. I would like to still use that $95,000 toward this expense. And then the rest will come out of the capital equipment replacement reserve. If, I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys might have about our budget amendment.
Any questions? All right, we need a motion to. Motion, second. Second, all right, any further discussion there? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. All right, item C, Hoptown Helps Grants, and you're still up.
So you have in your packet the municipal order that will allocate the recommendations from the Future Funding Committee. The Future Funding Committee reviewed every grant application that come up, come through for, that came through for the Hoptown Helps Program. And these are the agencies that, after a very competitive grant cycle, these were the agencies' grant applications that have been chosen to be funded. And I'm happy, I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys might have about this.
All right, any questions from Melissa?
I don't have any questions, but I do have a comment.
Yes, sir.
I've been here for four and a half years and seeing the work that was done on this by Melissa and her team. And and especially with Amy leading up that committee. It's about the smoothest I've seen anything work. And, you know, most of it or a good portion of it was her leadership and 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 you folks, how well you had things prepared for the people that served on that committee, so job well done, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll say, it wasn't easy. Like, it's hard to give money away, I know we've never thought that.
Yeah.
It was, it was very hard, there's winners and losers, and but, and it's, it was hard to choose, so. Buddy, any more? All right, we need a motion to forward that to council as well.
Make a motion.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second, any further discussion there? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes as well. Item D, staffing for adequate fire and emergency response grant program. Melissa, you're up again.
I'm up again, this is the safer grant, we applied for this grant last year and were denied. So we are applying for it again this year with our 12 new firefighter positions. The, anyway, the amount that is in there that we would, we would need, the local cost share is $1,221,025.73. And this is just, if we get it, we would pay that as a grant match.
And the total grant is 3.185, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am, okay.
And that's over three years.
Three years, okay. Got a motion to accept?
Second.
Second, any further discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes as well, you can finally sit down.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. All right, item A, other, is there any, anything that needs to be brought up under other? Hearing none, number nine, closed session, we are going to skip this, we're going to put that on next month's agenda. There wasn't much to discuss this evening, so we'll, we'll do that next month. Item 10, adjournment, we have a motion.
Motion.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.